Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our final class session on the Book of Lost Tales. And I am delighted to welcome a special guest tonight. As I've mentioned before, I really wanted to make sure that we spent some time in the context of the Book of Lost Tales, Part One, talking about Tolkien's languages. You know, you guys, I'm sure, have heard it said many times that Tolkien's language and his creation, the process of creating his languages was a really essential part of the birth of his stories, and that, as he, Tolkien himself, describes it, the stories themselves are really rooted in his languages. So we're, I have tonight the pleasure to introduce Andrew Higgins, who has been, who's completing his dissertation with Dimitri Fimi, and he has been working on Tolkien's early languages and the beginning of his legendarium. So as he's getting his audio sorted out here, we'll get him set in, and he's going to take you through some stuff about Tolkien, the birth of Tolkien's languages, and the early legendarium there in the Book of Lost Tales. So Andrew, are you ready?
Good evening, good afternoon. Hello, everyone. I'm just trying to get my webcam working, actually.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no problem.
Can everyone hear me all right?
Yep, you're coming through fine, audio-wise.
So I'm clicking on this button for the webcam, show my...
Show my webcam right there. Yeah, there should be a webcam button there on the tab, right below the microphones.
Ah, there we go.
There we go.
And this is my screen. Okay. Can everyone see me okay? Can you see me okay?
Yep.
Great. My able assistant partner, Morris dancing husband, helped me. There we go.
That's good.
Now, in order to see the PowerPoint, I just need to click back on, oh dear. What did I do now?
On the screen sharing tab up there at the top.
There we go. There I am. And then screenshot, the arrow one.
Yep, that's right.
Okay. We'll connect.
There we go.
Great. Okay, I think we've got it. I think we've got it. Fantastic. Well, thank you very much. I can't tell you how honored and humbled I am to be invited to do this, because I have been an inaugural Mythgard Institute, Signum University, a tenter since day one with Tom Shipley's, Virgil Flieger, Corey Olson's, and Michael Drudge's Tolkien and the Epic Course. And I think Mythgard is amazing. And for those of you out there who haven't taken a Mythgard course yet, or Signum course, I urge you to do so, because they are amazing. And I think my journey in Tolkien came in two ways, basically. One was by taking courses through Mythgard, and the second was being very fortunate to take another series of online courses with probably one of our best Tolkien scholars out there today, Dr. Dimitri Fimi, who urged me, when I was doing my blog, to actually stop doing a blog and do some serious research. And she convinced me, and I'm so blessed because of it, to actually attempt to do a thesis on J.R.R. Tolkien and focus in on the early works, the Book of Lost Tales, which I've been listening to these podcasts, and they've been amazing. And for me, what's really always interested me about Tolkien since the earliest time, I bought the Ruth Noll book and tried to write my own version of The Shadow of the Past in Sindarin, sorry Carl Hostetter if you're listening, I'm sorry for that, is Tolkien's languages. And I think I've kind of modeled my own academic life on Tolkien. I taught myself Anglo-Saxon and Gothic and Old Norse and everything, really based on what Tolkien did. And what I've been trying to do in this research is really get into what he was trying to do with the early languages, and how that gets contextualized also with the Book of Lost Tales narrative. We're very fortunate, thanks to the incredible work of a group of people called the Elvish Linguistic Fellowship, who essentially were entrusted with Tolkien's linguistic pages, of which I believe there's about 3,000 of them, along with all of the stuff that Christopher did with the Book of Lost, with the History of Middle Earth. And they've been literally going through and publishing Tolkien's early papers on language. And we're very fortunate now that we've got most of that early work, so we can look at it, and we can study it and contextualize it with the text. And that's what I've been trying to do, to understand what he was trying to do with the languages, and what he was trying to say with them. So I thought I'd just start off by doing a very quick background. And let's see if this works. Corey, can you see that?
I can, yes, yes. I just want to let everybody know, if you have questions about anything as we go along, I'm going to kind of duck out here and let Andy talk to you guys, and then I'm gonna, but I'll be watching the questions box and stuff, so I'll be happy to help to relay any questions you have through to Andy. So please do go ahead and type into the, into your normal questions box, any comments or questions that you have, so.
And I'm happy to stop and take questions and things like that as well, so just please keep typing in and, I mean, so, okay. What I wanted to start off by actually saying is, setting a bit of a context for Tolkien's language invention, because Tolkien wasn't the first language inventor, and as a matter of fact, he was working from a tradition of language invention in fiction. And one of the things that I've looked at is other past language inventors and what they were trying to do. And the first language inventor that we had for a fictional work was Thomas More, whose Utopia in 1516. And actually, the interesting thing about his, I call it a paratext trifecta, because he was the first one to create and invented language for fiction, he was the first one to use maps to kind of outline his fictional island of Utopia, and he was also the first one to create a writing system in which the language for fiction was expressed in the utopian alphabet. So Thomas More was one of the first, and after him, there came a series of what I would call travelers' tales that used the idea of a fictional work to convey a kind of culture, what was discovered on the island, or in one case, in Bishop Godwin's case, the man on the moon, on the moon. And this all culminated with probably one of the first very well-known travelers' tales that uses, or mentions invented languages, and that was Jonathan Swift's Gulliver's Travels in 1726. Gulliver travels to many different islands, and it's a very politically, there's lots of political satire in the islands he discovers, but he also talks about the different languages. And what's interesting about Swift, and Tolkien certainly knew Swift's invented languages, and he actually comments on them in several of the letters and in his Secret Vice talk, which I'll talk about in a minute, is Swift was one of the first to use this idea of a phonoaesthetic sense to an invented language, that he made a language sound like the culture that was speaking it. So one of the islands that Swift travels to is the Huninim, which are made up, which is an island made up of horse-like people, and they all speak with neighs, and they all sound like horses. So that's something that Tolkien would have been interested in when he was looking at the heritage of language invention. There is also a, two science fiction works that use an invented language which are interested. One is Edward Bullier Litten's Vril, The Coming Race in 1871, that has a full chapter on the Vrilian language, which incidentally uses base roots, and we'll come back to that when we talk about Tolkien. And the other one is a Victorian science fiction work, which actually, I just finished reading, and it's a fascinating, fascinating story by Percy Grant called Across the Zodiac. And this is almost like a, it reminds me a lot of Paralandra in a way. It's about someone who gets kidnapped to Mars, not Venus, but close, and on Mars, they discover that the Martians have a full grammar and working vocabulary for language that gets conveyed in the story. Closer to the time of Tolkien, we have Lewis Carroll's last work, after he wrote Alice in Wonderland, called Sylvia and Bruno, which is a fairy tale about two fairies. And within that story, there is a mention, and actually, examples of a, again, phonoaesthetic language called the doggy language, which sounds like dogs barking. And then finally, probably closest to Tolkien's time, there's the works of Lord Dunsany, especially The Gods of Pagana, which were published in 1905, which have invented names for their gods. And the one thing I'll say about most of these that I've studied is, these are, the invented languages are used almost like reports, or kind of commentaries back on what was discovered on the island. The languages are not integrated into the scope of the story. The other thing to just quickly review are some of the language theories that Tolkien would certainly have known about, and indeed, I think, was definitely commenting on in his language invention. And this breaks down into two key language theories. One is this idea that Ferdinand de Saussa, who was the founder of modern structural linguistics, put forth, that there is no fixed relationship between the signifier, which is the word, and the signified, the idea. So you could take a word, an idea of a tree, for example, and instead of calling it tree, call it aldar. We decide what those signifies are signified based on an agreement in our languages of what those different things mean, but they are not fixed. That's very handy for language invention, of course. The other emerging language theory that happened around the time Tolkien started inventing his languages was this idea that I mentioned earlier of phonoaesthetics or sound symbolism. And that is that there is actually a representational relationship between the sounds that make up a word and its meaning. Words sound like they mean. And I just give two examples here, one which was just mentioned in the last Book of Lost Tales class with the founding of men, the land of Mermannalda. Mermannalda, it sounds like they're sleeping. And the other one, of course, I like, is Moru, who's the dark primeval thing that's south there, that later becomes Ungolian. It sounds, Moru, sounds dark. The other thing that was happening around the time of Tolkien was this rise in the use of and study of auxiliary languages. And these were the attempt to invent languages to create cross-communication among peoples. And of course, the most famous one of this, and the one that Tolkien indeed learned when he was very young, was Esperanto. As well, though, there are other invented languages, and I would refer you to a fantastic book, if you haven't read it already, which is Dr. Dimitri Fimi's Tolkien: Race in Cultural History, where she has a whole chapter on this idea of what was going on in terms of language invention around the time Tolkien started to invent his languages. So I just want to review, do we want to stop for any questions? Are we okay?
Actually, just one quick question, Andy, if I could.
Yeah.
Janice Dean Reddiker asks a really good question, which is, how many of these languages, that is, those other invented languages you were describing? He says, how many of those were developed far enough to be actually seen as an invented language as we know them from Tolkien's work?
Very good question. I think, having looked at a lot of them, they do follow the type of pattern Tolkien followed in terms of creating a basic syntax and some words, but like I said, most of them are not integrated into the story in any way. So the difference with Tolkien, as we'll talk about in this minute, is he integrated his invented languages into the names of people, places, things, et cetera, whereas these languages, you know, you're reading about a traveler's tale, and then all of a sudden there's a chapter on the X, Y, Z language that I discovered on the island of blech, you know, it's that type of thing. So I think one of the reasons that they were done as well is they kind of mirrored some of the language invention that was going on outside of fictional works to kind of create the perfect language, or go back to the perfect language. And I would refer you to a wonderful workbook by Umberto Eco called The Search for the Perfect Language. I've got a bit of a bibliography at the end here, but he talks a lot about what was going on in the philosophical and scientific communities about trying to invent this perfect language, this Adamic language, that we were trying to get back to, basically. Did that help?
Yeah, yeah, that's great. Thanks.
Hello? Yeah, good, great. All right, so that was kind of setting a context for language invention. Now I want to talk a little bit about the kind of the chronology of Tolkien's earliest language invention, working up to the Book of Lost Tales. And it really starts with a language that, an invented language that Tolkien encountered that his two cousins, Mary and Marjorie Encliven, had created. Around 1906, 1907, Tolkien and his brother Hilary used to go visit their cousins, and they had created a replacement language called animalic. And all animalic is, and again, everything I'm saying here can be referenced in Tolkien's talk on language invention called The Secret Vice, which is published in Monsters and the Critics, which is a wonderful essay to read if you want to get into Tolkien's mind about what he thought about language invention. But animalic was what Tolkien called a replacement language. In other words, they just took a word, you know, and replaced it with an animal name. And he quotes one line of animalic in Secret Vice, which I will leave you to look up. But Tolkien didn't like this language, and actually, there's very little evidence that he was involved with it very much, although possibly, the name otter was Tolkien's animalic name, because he used it in this book of the fox rook, I'll talk in a minute. But I don't think Tolkien, he observed the lang, he saw them playing with it, but I don't think he was very interested in it for that matter. But one of the cousins, I think it was Marjorie Encliven, went on with Tolkien to develop another language, and this was called Nevbosch, and this is about 1907, the new nonsense. And what Tolkien starts experimenting with here is using what he called learned languages, like Latin, French, English, but he starts playing around with them, and he starts playing around with them from a phonetic point of view. And something to remember, I think, about Tolkien's language invention, there was always a focus on phonetic expression. He was very interested in how the words sounded. So for example, in Nevbosch, he takes the word for cow, and he turns it backwards, and it becomes woc, W-O-C. But then he comments in Secret Vice that actually, it also sounds very much like vash, which is the French word for cow. So he starts playing around with these ideas, and in Secret Vice, there's actually a limerick that he, that's published in Nevbosch, and you can see how that works. I think, again, with Nevbosch, he was still developing it within a community with his, in terms of Marjorie Encliven, and it still has a feeling of a code language. It's just words being replaced for words, basically, although being done a bit more artistically. The next language is the language that I think was Tolkien's first real secret device of language invention, and that's Naffrin. And he does that around 1908. He does this alone, without his cousins, and it stops being a language of a play community of people working, you know, suggesting words and things like that, and it starts being Tolkien inventing a language. And what we see, while we still see some learned languages, especially Latin and Spanish, possibly because he was looking at a lot of his guardian's, Father Francis Morgan's, books, who was a Spanish-Welsh man, but we start seeing some what he calls nasient elements, things that don't exactly look like codes anymore, they look like words. And Tolkien very frustratingly publishes in A Secret Vice a little quatrain in Naffrin, but he doesn't translate it, which has been frustrating to many, many Tolkienists, including myself. He does tell us one word, and the word is vru, V-R-U, ever, always. And actually, you can follow the through line of that word all the way to the name of Varanwy in the Book of Lost Tales, who of course is Ariandel's companion, which means the faithful, so ever, always, the faithful. Tolkien certainly liked certain sound combinations, and he kind of kept them through his languages, and this is one of them. The other interesting thing about Naffrin, and I think this is where myth starts to come in, because Tolkien was inventing this no longer in a community of people, he was doing it himself, this is where I think he started thinking about, well, these languages have to have someone who spoke them, and they have to have some story of the people who spoke them. And so this idea of the tell and the teller and the mind, or in this world, co-evolve, I think starts to come in here, and this builds. The other thing that happened roughly around this time is Tolkien also wrote his first invented coded system, or writing system, in this Book of the Fox Rook, which was a book, a scout code book, and we now know, thanks to the Birmingham Oratory website, that both Tolkien and his brother Hilary were Boy Scouts when they were at Birmingham. And Boy Scouts make codes, and I think this was his, Book of the Fox Rook was his private scout code, which he used to express phonetically the auxiliary language of his Esperanto. So by this time, he had already taught himself Esperanto, the invented system, and he was starting to develop a coded system. In 1910, he attempts to create an unrecorded proto-Germanic language called gautisk. And the only reason we know this is because the wonderful editors of the Quenya Lexicon, in the first couple of pages, include some notes that tell us that before he used the actual notebook, and I think paper was scarce back then, to do what will become the Quenya language, he sketched some notes about gautisk in terms of what it would sound like, that it would have some kind of Gothic feel to it, et cetera. I think, and Tom Shipley kind of confirmed this to me in a conversation I had with him, that I think gautisk was one of those attempts that Tolkien started and then just couldn't do any more with. There is some evidence that he might have thought this to be the language of Beowulf, and he was trying to create almost the proto-language that Beowulf would have spoken, but we don't have enough evidence to really go there anymore. The next really exciting thing about Tolkien's language invention comes in October 1914, a month after he wrote that first Ariandel poem, when he adapts the story of Kulervo from the Kalivala, which has been published in Tolkien Studies VII by Dr. Virgil Flieger, and is an amazing story, and actually, we've taught it on several Mythgard courses here. But what Tolkien did is, not only did he adapt the story of Kulervo from the Kalivala, he also went through and invented alternative names for some of the people, places, and things in the original Kalivala story. Several of those names, as Virgil Flieger and Carl Hostetter have pointed out, actually become early versions of Quenya base roots. For example, he invents the word kemmen for earth, to create the idea of kemmennume for the name of Russia, and this comes into the Quenya Lexicon as kemmypalorian, one of the names for the Vala Jovanna. So by October 1914, Tolkien is starting to think about this idea of creating a language partially based on his study of Finnish and the Kalivala, from what his mythology will come. Any questions there? Do we want to?
Hi, Andy, yeah, one quick question that Brian Fetterini had.
Before we go on?
Yeah. It's, how many languages did Tolkien actually speak semi-fluently? Or was his knowledge less practical and more scholarly, as in a solid working knowledge of vocabulary and grammar, but no real use in practice?
Well, I think we know that he definitely spoke some Spanish, because of Father Francis Morgan, his guardian, who is Spanish and Welsh, and he probably picked up some Welsh as well. But of course, at this time, he's now at Exeter College as an undergraduate, and he is studying, you know, having already studied at King Edward School, Anglo-Saxon, Old Norse, Gothic, medieval Welsh, so he's studying a lot of these languages. And of course, the great discovery for Tolkien came in roughly 1911, when he discovered the Kalivala, the Finnish national epic, and he felt that the translation by W.F. Kirby was too clunky. So when he came to Exeter College, he took out CNELE, it's Finnish grammar, which I've got somewhere out here, my own copy, not his, and he started learning Finnish, which is, as I like to call it, the Mount Everest of language learning, having still trying to plod my way through it. And that opened up, as he said, it was like a wine cellar, opening up a whole new bottle of wine. But again, that was a learned language. So in terms of what he spoke, I think we're pretty much sure that he probably spoke, obviously English, probably some Spanish, possibly Welsh, but I'll have to ask Dimitri Fimi that question, actually.
Thanks, Andy.
Hello? Did I lose everyone?
No, we're here. There's just, there's a slight lag between you and me, so that's all, there's just a bit of a delay between, but no worries.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't hear anything.
No problems.
Where are you? Okay. So should we talk a little bit about myth and language coming together? Because I think this is, this is interesting, because I think the Book of Lost Tales is really the culmination of this idea of myth and language coming together. And the roots of it can be seen going all the way back, of course, to September 1914, when Tolkien encounters this mysterious word or name, Ariandel, in the Christ poem, the Christ I, the Anglo-Saxon poem, and he starts to wonder, what does this name mean? What is this trisyllabic name that doesn't really sound Anglo-Saxon mean? And he starts to do a mythic exploration of it by creating through poetry a series of stories about the journey of Ariandel. And of course, those have been, those have been published. He then, a month later, does the story of Kulervo, which I was talking about, and roughly around 1914, early 1915, depending on which source you read, he starts compiling this earliest layer of the Quenya Lexicon. The next big step in the development is in May, now, there's an interesting one here, and I've just done some work on this. In May 1915, Tolkien paints a picture in his sketchbook called The Book of Ishness, called The Shores of Fairy, and next to the picture, he writes a very rough draft of a poem of the same name, The Shores of Fairy. In July 1915, he writes a more, a fairer version of this poem, and in that poem, we have the first evidence of invented names. And those invented names are, and they'll sound familiar to the people who've just read the Book of Lost Tales, Teniquetl, Valinor, Eglimar, and the name of Ariandel's ship, Vingalot. And you can trace each of those names back to base roots in the Quenya Lexicon. So that is really the first time, I think, that myth and language come together in Tolkien. He starts, he feels confident enough to use those invented, that Quenya Lexicon to create invented names that come into the mythic poetry. And that starts a whole series of poems, not all of them, not all of them have invented names, but we get to November 1915, and the poem that we, I know we read in the Book of Lost Tales class, Cortirion Among the Trees, which not only has the name Cortirion, but also the name, the very phonoaesthetic name, Al Almenore, which of course is, will later become part of work in the frame. So this is the kind of the progression. Tolkien probably start, definitely started off with myth and language separately, but it comes together, and by The Shores of Fairy, we have this first idea of invented names for the myth. Any questions on that?
Okay, Andy, let's see, no, no new, let's see, okay, actually, yes, one just came in. Noam Weiss was asking, just confirming, so the development was first words, followed by the world around them, and later the history and development of the language? Is that, is that a fair synopsis of the sequence?
Well, this next slide might answer that, actually. If I could go to the next slide. We're talking about Quenya.
Good, well, actually, let me just add one thing quick, then. Carl Hostetter, who has joined us for class today, had a-
I'm very honored to have-
-had a quick answer, also had something to add about Tolkien's languages. Carl says that Tolkien could certainly read, write, and I expect rather fluidly speak German, too. Carl says he doesn't think that he could speak Welsh, but he could probably read it somewhat, and he says that he expects he was as fluent in Latin as any Vatican state official.
That's very good.
And Dimitri adds that we only have Dimitri Fimi, who is also here with us live today. We have, we have like the whole, you know, council here today, this is awesome. Dimitri adds that we have only one instance when we know Tolkien tried to speak Welsh to a Welsh speaker, but that was quite late, like up in the 1950s.
Right.
So, that's all.
Good.
You can now carry on to the next slide, and we can, we can bring things back to Noam's question from before.
Okay, well, let me know if this answers that question, because what this next slide looks at is how the Quenya, the Quenya language kind of got developed. And really, based on the evidence of the Quenya Lexicon, one of the first things Tolkien did, I think, and Carl, Carl can definitely chime in here, definitely, because he edited them, is I think the earliest layer of the Quenya phrenology, which is included with the Quenya Lexicon, established the phonetic system for the language. Tolkien spends over 25 pages drawing out very, very complex philologic rules for sound and sound combinations. And through that, at the same time, roughly, I think, he also arranges these base roots. So he invents, and yes, we can trace some of these base roots back to some sources, but I won't go into that, but there are some possible sources for that, but most of them, as he later said, just kind of came to him, and if there is any before history of them, they don't mean anything. And then from those, he uses a series of prefix suffixes and infixes. So for example, I give an example here. This is a Quenya base root, moro, and moro means darkness. So again, it has that kind of phonoaesthetic sense. From this, Tolkien invents, and I almost pictured Tolkien like, like, what do you do when you're doing jazz, like improv-ing, like, you know, he just like takes that thing and he just starts adding things to it. So you get mori, night, morinda, of the night, nightly, moriva, nocturnal, morion, son of the dark, so the I-O-N is almost like an ending for sun, morwen, daughter of the dark, very familiar from Torn Taramba, morna, morqua, black, morilanta, which he combines with another base root, a very- the dark. So the ion is almost like an ending for sun, morwin, daughter of the dark, very familiar from Torn Taramba, morna, morqua, black, morilanta, which he combines with another base root, a very, very famous base root, lante, meaning falling, to create this idea of nightfall, morweenan, arcturus, or glint in the dark. So now he's using it to signify a planetary thing, moru, hide, conceal, morua, unclear secret. So all of these words have a common base root from which they can be, they can be traced back to. And they all sound the same because of that. They all have that kind of phonostatic sense of darkness. And I think one of the things that Tolkien was very interested in, and I think this is where he was almost trying to improve on other name inventors of the past, is he wanted there to be a coherence and consistency to his naming system. So unlike Dunsany, who just would, you know, make up names for all his gods, he wanted them all to have some kind of sense. So when someone saw the word mori, they knew that that had something to do with darkness. So that's how he formed the base root. And I think he was also, one of the other things he does in the Quenya lexicon, which is kind of a parallel to what he does in his Lost Tales, is he also creates mentions of other lost languages. For example, there is this very intriguing language called Talethka or Talethka, which the shadow people, if you remember the shadow people from Habanon, the poem Habanon and Ariadur, and Tolkien just mentions it a couple of times in the lexicon, which almost creates a sense, well, it does create this sense of depth, you know, that there are these other languages that existed as well. And while there are hints of a Quenya grammar in the lexicon entries, Tolkien would not write the first formal Quenya grammar until about the 1920s. So again, I think with the earliest languages and with Quenya, Tolkien was very interested in name invention. He wanted to create that system of name invention, so they could, as they start appearing in the poetry first and in the prose. And it's a name system that needed to have a coherence and a consistency, as you can see with moro. And I think one of the reasons why base roots, why did he use base roots? I think one of the things that he was being influenced by were some of the 19th century theories of language, starting with philologists like Max Muller, who believed in this, that languages started out as, you know, base roots and then were built upon. And there was this search for the proto-European base language, this idea I talked about earlier, of the perfect language. He wanted to improve on past name inventors. And I think there's also something about making them fit into the narrative, you know, this idea of creating this idea of a linguistic reality, so that these worlds, these words sounded like the world that the story inhabited. And he also gives clues to the nature of the words. And I think one of the most interesting things about Tolkien is he almost encourages you to learn the language, because every time he gives, you know, Tol Erisia, he then says, "The Lonely Island." He translates it, basically. So you have that kind of sense that he wants you to know what those languages mean and everything. Any questions?
Yeah, yeah. Noam has a follow-up question here. He says, "So Kenya has base roots, that is, basic shared sounds associated with meaning, and prefixes and suffixes, but no real patterns? So I can't, for example, use the several base forms with different base roots to get different words?"
You can. And I think Tolkien gives a lot of, I mean, there is a consistency to those different things. So like, for example, if you want to form an adjective or something like that, he does it in several ways. But you can go through the Quenya lexicon, as I have done, and actually look to see whether there are similarities in terms of how, for example, he forms a past tense with an N suffix. So you can take, you could take a verb, and you could put an N suffix in there, and you've got the past tense, because he's done that several times. But again, we don't, I'll show in the next slide, we do have some samples of Quenya. He wrote a poem in it, actually, called Narquillion, which we'll get to in a sec. But in the Quenya lexicon itself, he doesn't write a lot of Quenya. He doesn't give a lot of examples. But he does show how words are formed using different types of suffixes, prefixes, and suffixes. And so from that, you can start to get an idea of what the language, how the language is structured and things like that. The Quenya phonology also gives some hints as well. It has a couple of sentences. But actually, if you look through The Book of Lost Tales, and I find this fascinating, you don't have a lot of Quenya. There's a couple of lines of actual Quenya in it. Where you find more Quenya, and Noamish, is in a lot of the documents he wrote around the Book of Lost Tales, the paratextual documents that have been published by the Elvish Linguistic Fellowship, things like Days of the Week, the Nameless of the Valar, Creatures of the Earth, that really start to have sentences and things like that.
Great, great, yeah. Thanks.
Great, great. Just some other, oh, before we go to that, just some interesting points about the Quenya lexicon. As I said, there's also that phonostatic nature. Another thing Tolkien does, which is a lot of fun to look at, and I urge you, you know, order the Quenya lexicon and go through it, because it's a lot of fun, is he was very ludicrous and playful with the construction of his words. And then there's some really interesting ones, like, for example, he takes the base root saha, which means be hot, and he yields the word, he makes the word sahura, which means the south. But of course, it sounds like Sahara. You know, so he's making a little kind of joke there on the Sahara Desert. Another interesting one is, and I find this one's really interesting, he equates the word lemonkinen with the number 23. Lemonkinen is the kind of the heartthrob hero of the Kalavala. He's the young lover, basically. And when Tolkien started working on the Quenya lexicon, he was 23 years old. So as much as I think Tolkien wanted to associate himself with Kulervo, I think here, he's also saying he's a bit of a lemonkinen as well, which is interesting. He also mythologizes, mythologizes himself, Edith, Father Francis, and his brother, through language invention. There are several interesting entries for a character who very much resembles Edith, his first girlfriend, and then wife, of course. Arinti is a very good one in that respect. But there's also Amilo, who is born in February, which was when Hilary Tolkien was born. So I think Tolkien is being very playful with this. And let's remember, this was a private lexicon. You know, we don't know what Tolkien wrote this in terms of publishing. And I think there's a wonderful passage in his lecture on the Kalavala where he talks about taking a holiday. And I think Tolkien was taking a bit of a linguistic holiday by doing this lexicon and being very playful. I also think this is an interesting one. There's a very dark philological joke with two words in the lexicon, heclar and ringel. And if you'll remember in The Book of Lost Tales, the scene when the Valar ask Melkor, for whatever reason, no, to make the two pillars upon which the lights of the world will first set, the first lights before the two trees. And the names that they're given are, that Melkor gives them, is heclar and ringel. And if you look in the Quenya lexicon, heclar and ringel both have to do with ice and snow. So within the names of the pillars that the two lights are going to sit on, already is the kind of the dark philological joke that these things are going to melt and destroy the two lights. So if you know your Quenya lexicon, and you know heclar, you know that Melkor was playing a joke on the Valar, and he signifies that in the name. So I just thought that was interesting. And also, I think there's some evidence that Tolkien invented some of these words to use in poetry. There's lots of indications of poetic words. And I've done some work to kind of look at some of the early poems that Tolkien would have written at this time, and what correlative they have with words in the Quenya lexicon. And it's interesting. I think he was definitely thinking that way of taking some of those poems and turning them into Quenya. And then also, he wrote a poem in Quenya. And in a secret vice somewhere, Tolkien says, "The highest, the highest progression a language can take is if you can write in poetry." And in late 1915, early 1916, he wrote a poem called Narquillion, which means autumn. And again, if you look at the base root of Narquillion, it's N-R-Q-R, and it means wither, fade, and shrivel. And the poem itself, which is kind of the first version of a poem Tolkien would write, I think, many, many times in the course of his legendarium, is this idea of autumn and withering and fading. And if you look just at the first line, ne alamino la, sorry, ne alamino la lantila, ne sumi lasa pinie, the elm tree, so you see the word tree and elm, elm tree, alamino, la lantila, let's fall one by one. So you have that blant idea, again, of falling, ne sumi lasa pinie, the small leaves, lasa leaves, upon the wind, sumi, which is where manway is called manway sumilio, which has to do with wind. And then I just gave you the rest of it here. It's actually been published. You can get it in Vignart Tengwar, which, along with Parma Elda Lambaron, are two of the must-haves if you're going to do Tolkien's early languages. This is where the Elvish Linguistic Fellowship has published a lot of this material. Any questions?
I have a quick question, Andy. Could you talk for a second about the, sort of the poetic form that he's using here? How does, in looking at his Quenya poetry here, how does it, well, how does it work, that is? I mean, I can see there appear to be end rhymes that he's using in some of these lines. Does he, do you find, are there alliterative patterns as well? What kind of poetic structures does he use in his Quenya poetry?
I think I've identified that. I mean, I think it's A, B, A, yeah, I think more work to be done there, yes, Corey. But I think there is definitely some early kind of alliteration and things like that being used in it, definitely.
Right. I mean, just from the look of it, it would kind of look, I mean, the second and third line was, well, yeah, yeah, yeah. Of the ones that you have indented there, those would seem to, well, they're close anyway. Anyway, I'm looking at the way that they seem to, he seems to have some interlocking rhymes there, right, with Eldamar, Aldar, Almaldar, curi rhyme, and then the Noldorinwa and Laikweninwa, those, you know, but then, so you've got the, you know, the A rhyme around the B rhyme, and then interlocking with the C. So he seems like he's doing, you know, which is not at all shocking, based on his English poetry, a pretty ornate interlocking rhyme scheme there.
Yeah.
Are the, do the lines tend to be consistent syllabically? Like, you know, does he follow a syllabic meter generally?
I'd have to go back and look. I'm not sure. I know with this one, I kind of scanned it out this way, and it was kind of that interlocking idea. But that's, yeah, I should definitely go back and look at that, yeah.
Yeah. See, and here I am, here I am, putting you on the spot here. But I'm just, I don't trust my own pronunciation to read it aloud and really kind of sound it out in my own ear here. So I just, yeah, this is just, I'm really interested, of course, I mean, as you know, I'm really interested in Tolkien's poetry, and in particular, the way in which, I just love his creativity and sort of adventurousness in exploring different, you know, meters and rhyme schemes and lengths of line and things like that. And he's so sensitive to that in English. It looks like he's doing a similar kind of thing. But I was wondering, I mean, of course, I know that he was also very interested in other verse forms, such as the alliterative line, of course, which, you know, which he did a lot of work with in the Germanic languages and, you know, and in places like The Fall of Arthur, and, you know, the alliterative Children of Hurin. But, so, yeah, so I'm just kind of, I would be interested, you know, for me, one of the things that I'd really be interested in studying more is the way, sort of the character of Quenya poetry here, and if, you know, what kind of, what kind of characteristics he's giving it. So anyway, I'm just kind of, I'm just kind of thinking on my feet here, and, you know, looking through.
You've inspired me to study poetry more, so I will add that to my-
Yeah.
I just spent about six months getting alliterative down. So yes, I will.
Yeah, yeah. You know, Roy has, Roy Ankari Karlinsky has a quick sort of follow-up question there. He's observing, for instance, you know, the apparent phonetic connection, you know, the phonetic similarity between, you know, that, you know, Al Almenore and elm, right? And you've got the LM combination. And Roy is asking, did he actively attempt, attempt to match Quenya sounds with English ones? Do we see that kind of overlap a lot? Or is that just kind of a coincidence with that one, or because of, you know, because he felt that elm, you know, that LM combination already had a phonostatic value for, you know, what it was describing, or?
I don't know. I mean, that actually, the elm comes from a base root alla, which means to spread, which is interesting. So it's, it becomes al almino, but if you go in the Quenya lexicon, the root of the word for tree, actually, is alla, which means to spread. And then from that, he creates aldah. But I, you know, like, I mean, you can, I think the other interesting thing is the phonostatic sense of it, like la lantila, you know, let's fall one by one. It sounds like let's fall one by one, in a way, yeah. It has that kind of, it sounds symbolism to it. But whether he, again, the tricky thing is, I mean, you can go through the Quenya lexicon, and we, there, it's been proven that some words came to him, like one of the earliest Quenya roots, ono, which creates gondolin, I mean, it's the word for stone, basically, owned, came to him from a book he read, John Rees's Celtic Britain, when he was about seven years old. And it was suggested in that book that this is one of the earliest pre-English words we have, the other one being fern, which I haven't been able to find anywhere. And then he takes that and he brings that into the Quenya lexicon. But he said in a letter later on, that whatever history it had beforehand is, you know, inconsequential. It starts with how I incorporate it. So whether he said elm, um, yeah, that's, that makes sense, I'll do that, I don't know. I don't know. But it'd be an interesting one to look at, definitely.
Yeah, yeah. So it sounds like, you know, especially with alla being the root word there, it's, it sounds just sort of more coincidental there, that it worked out that way. But-
I'm gonna do my Tom Shippey now. Here, this is my Quenya lexicon.
I always, I always love it when Tom Shippey holds a book up to the webcam. That's always a highlight.
So I'm just checking the alla, just to make sure I'm not lying there. Yes, alla, spread, yes. And then from that comes aldah, aldea, tree shadowed, aldeon, avenue of trees. Yeah, so, and then al alme, elm tree, comes from that same alla root. But whether he said elm alla, it sounds alike, I'll do that, I don't know. Okay.
By the way, Karl Hofstadter has just offered that if time allows and his microphone works, he'd be happy to recite the poem for us.
Absolutely. I would love to hear a part of it. Yes, absolutely.
Do you want to try to pause it? Well, do you want to, why don't we go ahead and finish, and then we can come back to this at the end, so we don't have a, just in case we run into any technical snags. I don't want to have put too long of a break here in the middle of your talk. But yeah, yeah, let's, Carl, if you're willing to hang out with us for a little bit, let's definitely do that if we can.
Brilliant.
Okay. Anyway, so why don't you go ahead and carry on? Yeah, there were a couple other people who were talking about sort of other connections, you know, sort of apparent connections, like that one between, you know, elm there that we were just talking about. And, you know, with other language, other languages. Brian Fetterini was just talking about how murminalda, you know, reminds him of the Spanish word for whisper, murmulo. But, and see, there, I'm suspecting, again, like we were talking about, it's less a question of him making a reference to a particular language, and more to, you know, him appreciating, him having picked up on and appreciating the phonostatic value of these other languages, you know, so that when, you know, when his languages as other languages are, you know, really trying to convey this, you know, the idea that he would have had some of these sort of, that basically his own phonostatic sense would have been informed by how he saw that happening in languages like Spanish or English or these other things. And that I, my own suspicion is that some of those kind of, because I've often had conversations with people who will be insisting, you know, like, I remember I had this conversation recently with a guy who spoke Arabic and was just absolutely insisting that Tolkien must have been able to speak Arabic because of these similarities that he was detecting in some of Tolkien's names and in these, you know, words in the Arabic language. He just refused to believe that it could possibly be a coincidence, you know, because it was so similar. But my own response to that is, I think it's just, you know, I think that Tolkien himself would probably take that as evidence of, you know, the way that language works, you know, and in a sense, that kind of mythic impact of language, the way that it is, you know, fundamentally connected to these sort of root ideas and reflects them.
Yeah. I mean, I know, so, you know, Tolkien was a very, I mean, even as a young man, he was very well read in languages. And, you know, he talks later on about the leaf mold of the mind, you know, this idea of what was in his mind. But, you know, you look at the Exeter College notebooks from when he was taking courses, and the man, you know, spends hours doodling phonetic sound shifts. I mean, this is a guy that thought about language all the time, you know. So I'm sure, even he might not have known Arabic, but I bet you he must have looked at a book or something that might have had some Arabic in it or something. So you can't, but it's what- So you can't, but it's what happened when he, you know, set pen to paper and started thinking about this. And I think that that all kind of comes to the fore, basically. Yeah. Okay, so just to talk a little bit about what happened after the war. So now, obviously Tolkien fights in World War One, he's discharged, he's in recovery. And that's when he starts working on, in late 1916, the first book of what becomes the first Lost Tale, The Fall of Gondolin, which hopefully, if we do a Book of Lost Tales 2, Mythgard Academy, yes, 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 please, we'll, we'll, we'll study. But roughly around that time as well, he comes back to the Quenya lexicon and he starts working on the Quenya lexicon and he compiles almost a separate list of words, which he calls the poetic and mythological words of Eldarissa. And this is a bit of a refinement of some of the words. And they're actually all published in the Quenya lexicon as well. And through The Fall of Gondolin, also Tolkien starts to think about the exiled elves, the elves that have to leave Valinor and everything and go off into the great, into the earth, you know, the exiles. And he starts to develop another language for them. And he bases this language on a similar exiled people, in a way, the Welsh. And he creates the language that becomes known as Gnomish or Goldegrin. And he writes a Gnomish lexicon. And interestingly, with the Gnomish lexicon, he doesn't use base roots. It's just a straight listing of words. And he also writes a grammar. And it was published, this is it, for those of you, this is the Gnomish lexicon, right here. And it has a whole separate vocabulary of related words. What Tolkien also does at this time is he goes back to the quenya phonology, the earlier quenya phonology, and he invents almost a core proto-eldaran language from which quenya and gnomish now derive. And he develops a series of sound shifts that allow words to either become quenya or gnomish. So there is a relationship between the two. But what Tolkien wanted there to be is a sense of the gnomish language being the language of a people of exile, a people who were enthralled them to Melko, let's remember. You know, this is the language that, when Otto Wayfair comes to the Tolara Sea, the Lonely Island, this is the language that Rumiyo and all of them are speaking. So it's a language after they've been enthralled them to Melko and in exile and everything. So it's a harder, harder bitten language. And it's really in the Book of Lost Tales that we have this first linguistic expression of both, of this new language system of quenya and gnomish. And Tolkien also writes, as I said, in a series of attendant language documents, which have all been published as well, which give more information on that. Around this time as well, as he's working on really the kind of the music of Einor cycle of the Book of Lost Tales. So we're in 1918, 19, Tolkien is working as a lexicographer at the Oxford English Dictionary. And he creates two writing systems. The first one is called the Alphabet of Rumiyo. We all know who Rumiyo is from the Book of Lost Tales. This actually starts out as a writing system outside of the mythology that Tolkien used to write his own private diaries, which unfortunately are not published. And then became incorporated into the mythology as this first writing system of the elves. And the second series is a series of runic alphabets, which Tolkien invents or actually modifies from the Germanic runes of Anglo-Saxon and Old Norse and Gothic. And I think this has a lot to do with his attempt, which was one of the big thrusts, of course, of the Book of Lost Tales, to link it to a lost tradition of English or what's become known in Tolkien studies as the Mythology for England project. And these would have either been the runes that Ariel Otto Wayfair would have brought with him to the Lonely Island or perhaps, given that with the Ingles story, they might have already been on the island for Ariel to encounter. And I just, I don't know how easy it is to see this, but I just wanted you to see here a comparison from the names of the Valar of how the names change, change between quenya and gnomish. And it gives you a sense of the differences in the language. So for example, ulmo in quenya becomes gulma in gnomish. So there's a change there, a G kind of comes into the name. Melkor in quenya becomes belcha in gnomish. Gnomish tends to have a much more harder consonantal, lots of stops, implosives at the end. Whereas when you have something like orame, you get oramaldor, so things get ended. So it gives you that sense that these are people who have been wandering for a long time and the language has been changed in that wandering. Any questions there?
Let's see, not right away, there might be some coming in here, but I think you can go on, we can pick up those later.
I'm almost done.
Great, great.
And then we could talk. I just wanted to, I mean, I just, I just real, just giving here some sources, basically, for people who are interested. And I just think studying Tolkien's languages is amazing. I mean, it's just, he was, he was such an incredible, you know, philologist and linguist. And how he connected that to mythology is unique. I don't think there's anyone else who's ever done it. Others have tried, I know. But I think Tolkien was the master at it. And I've got to say that, you know, now that we have these materials, thanks to the linguist, Elvish Linguistic Fellowship, it's such a great invitation to dig into them. And I think with, you know, the whole history of Middle Earth, there's so much more that we can be doing. So I encourage anyone out there who's interested to kind of study and dig in more. But certainly, The Monsters and the Critics and Other Essays has the two essays, the talks that Tolkien gave on language invention, Secret Vice, and English and Welsh. And then I just listed the first two of the Parma Eldalambarons. The first one is the Gnomish Lexicon and the second one is the Quenya Quetzal, the Quenya Phonology. There's lots of others. And if you go to www.elvish.org, you can order them all. And I encourage you to do that. There's also a wonderful encyclopedia of fictional and fantastic languages by Conleen Kane. That's just a listing of lots of different invented languages. I can't recommend highly enough, for those of you who haven't read it, and I'm sure most of you have, Dr. Dimitri Fimi's book, Tolkien: Race and Cultural Histories and Fairies to Hobbits. You know, Dimitri and John Garth were the first two scholars to really dig in to the languages and contextualize it with, with the myth, and they are the masters at it. And then I mentioned Umberto Eco's The Search for the Perfect Language, excuse me. And then finally, there's a wonderful book, I think it might be out of print, but if you can find it, it's amazing. And it's called Lunatic Lovers of Language: Imagining Languages and Inventors by Marina Yaguelo. And she has a really good kind of review of invented languages. That's it, I'm done. Now we can discuss.
Okay, very good. You know, one, one question that I had, you know, Andy, sort of thinking about some of the other, both thinking about stuff we've been looking at in the Book of Lost Tales, especially thinking about the way we've been looking at Tolkien's use of myth in the Book of Lost Tales and, you know, the way in which, you know, he's, he seems to be so much more interested in doing those sort of myth of explanation, you know, this, this concept of myth as sort of getting back to the root of things, even in ways which he then, you know, later on in his career rejected as silly or absurd. He always being so much quicker and harsher to reject his earlier thoughts than I am, of course. But, you know, and I was, I was reminded of that when you were talking about the base words and things and looking at the root words of some of these, you know, just the whole, the way in which the language is centered on those base concepts. It gives to me this, 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 well, I don't know, I was just wondering what you think about the parallel, you know, between the idea of, of myth and, you know, the idea of those, of those, of those root words as, as a kind of like myth behind the language almost, you know, like that there's this, there's this one central thing with, which is, which is, which has not even necessarily a definition so much as like it is a mythic concept. And then that mythic concept is manifested in, in the language just as a mythic idea gets, you know, sort of embodied in story or pointed to through story and through, and through mythology, you know. But that, but that deeper concept of, of what is being pointed to, that can't really just be spelled out and said. You know, that, there are some, you know, there's, there are some things that have to be conveyed in story, you know, in myth. And, and I think that it just sort of strikes me that there doesn't seem to be in Tolkien's, any, any sort of story equivalent exactly to, you know, those, those, those base words, those root words in the language. That it's almost as if like the, in the language itself, he's able to convey that mythic or embed that mythic concept within the language.
Yeah. And also, I think Tolkien used the lexicon. I mean, there's several cases in the lexicon of names of, for example, flower fairies, things like that, that don't come into the Lost Tales. I think he was thinking mythically as he was inventing the language. And there's, and the other thing I'll say, there's a wonderful kind of series of roots that kind of create this idea of Arian, the word Arian, which is tied up with this idea of the shadow people. And I think what he was trying to show there is where we get our word Arian comes from, actually comes from the echo of an Elvish word that was transmitted to men through the elves. So he's kind of trying, trying to create this idea of language transfer. Again, is that why do we call it Arian? Why, you know, what is the reason for that, basically? It's because it goes back to this Elvish word that, you know, that's in the lexicon, basically. But I think he's also trying to show what words mean. You know, he's trying to create that sense of, there's a sense to that word moru, you know. There's a phonostatic sense and there's something about it, you know, there's a sense of it. Just like, you know, ashnags, debashtigul, ashnags, gimbitul sounds very different from i lori lan ti la sari, you know. I mean, it's two different kind of sound sets, basically.
Right, 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 right.
Oh, God, I just did the Ringham script, oh, God. Hopefully things didn't get very charged.
Do not utter that.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, Roy is saying, you know, that, that he thinks it sort of harks back to the mythic power of names and words too. Like the name of God in the Old Testament. And of course, you know, there are many places where you can see that the, you know, to utter something's name is, you know, to name a thing is, is really crucial. So there does seem to be that idea of, you know, of, of name being, being fundamentally tied in. So, you know, this is one of the reasons why, you know, you're talking about de sacer and the, you know, the signifier and the signified. And there always seemed to me that a sort of sense in Tolkien's, in Tolkien's work and possibly in his languages, almost a kind of resistance to that, you know, that he did seem to posit some kind of, especially with the emphasis on the phonostatic stuff, some kind of actual connection between language and things rather than a purely conventional connection between, between words and things. I just, you know.
And I also, yeah, and I also think for Tolkien, creation was naming, you know. I think they were the same, you know. I think there's somewhere, I can't remember, I think it's in Durin, one of the poems about Durin's Day, you know, before things were named, before, you know, there's nothing before naming, basically. And for Tolkien, the name came first, you know, and the story followed, as he said, basically.
Right.
Yeah. And I think he embed, I think the other interesting thing about base roots is he embeds the story in the name. So Narquellion, the base root already has the sense because he created it, you know. He created that sense that it means withering and all that. It creates the sense of what the word means. He also reversed engineered, I think, historical philology. You could trace these words back because he started with base roots, you know. So in a way, he was mirroring what 19th century philology was trying to do, which is finding what those base roots by first creating them and then creating, and Tolkien was very interested in how languages change over time, real or feigned. And he shows through all of his linguistic work, how these words change, but how you can trace the map, you know, to a base root.
Yeah, yeah. A quick question about that. Brian Fattarini had another question. And he's, he's using the illustration of the name Feynor, okay? And he says, okay, you know, the Silmarillion gives the translation of Feynor as spirit of fire, right? But in the, in the appendix in the Book of Lost Tales, it translates Feynor as goblet smith.
Yeah, that's very interesting.
Yeah, it is. So basically, his question is, you know, is there a way that we can kind of trace the trajectory, you know, for this particular name? Can, can we see where Tolkien, you know, in the same name, right, he's kept the same name? And yet, it seems clear that sort of the language has changed around it, right?
Very funny. I read that just, when I was rereading the appendices, I saw that and I said, damn, I've got to look in the Gnomish lexicon and see how he gets goblet smith from Feynor. Right. I still like the fact that in the Gnomish lexicon, there's a word for growl, which means ring. I'm not going there with that one. I mean, that's a paper at some point, but I don't know.
Yes, yes.
But I, I promise, I will look that up because I find that fascinating. I underline that. I was like, oh, my God, I never noticed that before.
So, so, so where are you going to go to look it up?
In the Gnomish, I was going to look in the Gnomish lexicon, actually. Just to see if there was a fea nor, I mean, if there was anything about goblet or anything. So if you look at fe, no, I don't see, we're gonna have to do some work on this one.
Okay, okay.
I have no idea how that becomes goblet. I have no idea.
Okay.
Anor. Nope. I don't know if Carl has any ideas on that one.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's great. I know this is one of the things that, and again, it's, it's, it's another one of the questions that I often get. You know, people saying, I'd like to learn more about Tolkien's languages. Like, where do I go to find the answers to these? You know, where can people go to sort of learn, you know, learn how to, you sort of, start to try to puzzle out these riddles themselves?
Well, I think the interesting thing there is, because when people ask me that, I mean, I think one of the best things to read on Tolkien linguistics is Carl Hostler's article, Elvish, sorry, not Elvis, Elvish as She Is Spoke. Because what Carl talks about there, I think, is the fact that you, there is no, there is no one language to learn. I mean, Tolkien, I don't think was interested in creating a complete grammar. And let's remember, Tolkien modeled a lot of his languages on kind of the grammars he used when he studied language. He would start really well with the phonology. He'd get into the cadence a bit. By the time he got to syntax, he was on to something else. So do we have a complete verb form in quenya? No. I mean, and so what happens is, you know, there's a certain school of Tolkien linguistics that then take that and build upon that and kind of fill in the gaps. I'm not a big fan of that kind of thing. I think what they do is great, but I don't think it's Tolkien's work. So I think what's more interesting for me about Tolkien's language is studying what Tolkien was trying to do by tracing, by, with all these languages. Not say, I want to learn, I want to be able to learn quenya for fun and profit in two months because I don't think that will ever happen.
Right, right.
Jim Allen's book is probably, which is, which came out in the 70s, I think. Jim Allen's book about the Elvish languages is probably the most complete kind of grammar that you can get around Sindarin and quenya. But there's still a lot of things that we don't know. And there's also a lot of things I think Tolkien changed, you know. Tolkien would get up in the morning and he would just sketch a new past tense for something, you know.
Right.
So you have to kind of decide what period of Tolkien's linguistic growth you want to study. And then you kind of study that. And you realize there's going to be contradictions, there's going to be changes. I mean, what's wonderful about the Parma Eldalambarons is they not only give you the text, they give you all the alternative notes that Tolkien wrote in the columns and the side. And it's incredible, you know. But to kind of build out of that, okay, I now know quenya, I can speak quenya. I don't think that's what Tolkien was interested in.
Right, so you don't, you don't think there's, there's really any future in trying to write like a traveler's guide in quenya, you know, like how to order lunch in quenya? And, you know, the various conversational gambits that you can use, you know. Probably not, yeah, yeah.
I'm still holding, I'm hoping, I'm hoping his mannish language of tuliska actually has a grammar and a vocabulary that you can write something in. But I have my doubts about that as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But there's a lot to, there's a lot to study. I mean, and when you study Tolkien's languages, you study, I think, how languages work, basically. And how, how languages grow and change. And how that works in terms of peoples and things like that.
Right, yeah, no, it is, it is fascinating. I agree. You know, it's one of the things that I, you know, keep coming back to and trying to answer people's questions about the books and stories is, you know, it's sort of less exaggerated, you know, in a sense. But, but exactly what you're saying about having to kind of decide when in Tolkien's life you're talking, especially when people are asking, you know, questions about Silmarillion things, you know, so often the answer to the question is, well, you know, there's one answer to that, you know, in 1920 and there's one answer to that in 1930 and there's a different answer to that in 1950. And, and, you know, it's, it's, you just have to kind of, you know. So usually what I normally do when I'm trying to answer a question is just sort of say at the beginning, like, okay, here's the answer according to the published Silmarillion. Like, basically, you know, accepting that as a frame, here's the answer to the question. But to try to, try to, try to recognize that, yeah, these things, these stories were certainly sort of living things over Tolkien's life that he kept coming back to. And, and the languages, obviously, were something that he never really left behind and certainly never finished in that sense. never finished, in that sense. So yeah, I know it is, I know it can be really frustrating to people who just want to, who just want to learn Quenya, you know, and know it as if, yeah, and it's hard, it's hard.
Yeah. I mean, one of the things that I'm interested in is looking at, because I think, and you pointed this out with the Book of Lost Tales classes, I think the Tolkien who wrote the Book of Lost Tales, you know, these are much, I mean, look at the Valar, you know, just the character of the Valar.
Yeah.
They're much more out there, they're much more raw. And I would love, kind of as a project in the future, in the near future, once I get my thesis done, is to look at how the languages change over time, and does that reflect Tolkien refining himself linguistically as he kind of refined himself narratively?
Yeah.
As well?
Yeah.
We see more of a kind of raw, kind of primitive, primitive's not the right word, something, use of linguistics in the early Book of Lost Tales stuff, and there's that change by the time he gets to Lord of the Rings.
Yeah.
And by doing that, you'd have to look at several chunks of, you know, and we have a lot of this thanks to all the publishing, of the, you know, of Gnomish, Noldorin, Sindarin, et cetera, and how it all changes. I mean, that would be quite a project. But I just, it would be interesting to see, did he refine himself as he refined the narrative as well?
Yeah, it would be fascinating to look at that. Because, I mean, I think you can, you know, you can look at, you can look at the Book of Lost Tales, and you can look at the Laithian, you know, and you can look at, you know, the 1930 Quenta and these other things. And, you know, you can look at the unfinished Tor and Turin stuff from the stuff that's in Unfinished Tales that he was doing in the 50s, right, you know, so to look at sort of another, another layer of that later on. You can look at these things and see different, you know, ways in which the stories are shifting, right? You know, there's some sort of different sensibilities there. There are different tones, you know, different styles, even different genres, you know, that he's applying to these things. It would be really fascinating to be sort of looking at that in conjunction with looking at the changes in the languages and to see, you know, what kind of, what kind of, you know, are there ways in which we can see those things kind of changing together? Are there ways in which we can, you know, we can really kind of gain insight from, from looking at how those two things were sort of proceeding together? I think it's really, I think there's a lot to, there's a lot to do and a lot to look at there.
Future projects.
Future projects, huge, practically undoable future projects. Or future community projects for many, many people, perhaps.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. But, yeah, cool. Well, let's, if he's still available, let's bring Carl in and see if we can, I would love to hear, hear the poem there in Quenya. And then, you know, maybe if he has a couple of minutes, we can, we can, we can ask him some of his thoughts about some of these things, too.
Absolutely.
So see, Carl, I'm gonna, I'm gonna unmute your mic here. Let's see, okay, your mic is on. Let's see if we're able to hear you.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can, yes, very good.
Oh, great.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for joining us. This is such a special, unplanned treat for us.
Well, thanks for the opportunity. I really enjoyed listening in.
Yeah.
How'd I do, how'd I do, Carl?
Pretty good. I got a few notes to send you.
Okay, good.
Pronunciation, mostly.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm working on my Kolivala and Kulavva, thanks to Virgil and Binkler.
Yes, yeah.
Actually, before I get into the poem, I did want to make a comment regarding the desire to sort of speak Elvish. One of the things that I've always found really ironic, to put it nicely, I guess, is that the early lexicons are so frequently ignored, except as a source for vocabulary for later, what are called later forms of the language. If you really want to see Tolkien in his fullest, nearest, I want to create a language people can speak mode, this is it. Partly that's because at the time he was writing this, he imagined it set in more of a medieval world, where you have, you know, an Anglo-Saxon mariner, so it's, you know, later ages, and also you see the influence of Christianity and such, which of course, in the later version of the Middle Earth mythology, everything is set long before Christ. So, I mean, here in the lexicons, you get all of the useful words like butter, salt. You also get all the words for naughty bits, and, you know, everything that you could want. It's really, it's sort of similar to the way the mythology at this point was much freer and more exuberant. The vocabulary itself at this point seems to have been as well. So I really think it's, it's sort of gotten short shrift. And that's why I'm glad to see people like, like you, Andrew, you know, actually working with this material in a serious fashion.
No, it's fantastic stuff. There's lots of really good, really good stuff in there, definitely.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. And perhaps now that we have intimated that you can go to the Gnomish lexicon in order to learn dirty words in Tolkien's language, perhaps that will help inspire further scholarship.
Yeah, they're all there.
I think I've got them highlighted, actually.
Now, as far as Narquellion goes, I did want to, the question came up about the verse, the meter, rather.
Yeah.
One thing to note is that the poem as we actually have it, as it survives, is 20 lines long. Now, we don't know that that was all that Tolkien intended to write. And I can actually partly make an argument that maybe he intended it to be longer, because if you look at the verse structure, it actually kind of reminds me of Petrarchan sonnets, because certainly the first 14 lines are divided into, or could be divided into, an octet followed by a sestet. So you have, you have eight lines, actually, it's two verses of four lines each, followed by a verse of six lines. What follows that is a verse of four lines and then a verse of two lines. Now, it might be that Tolkien intended it to stop there, and that was just, you know, for emphasis or whatever. But it also might indicate that perhaps it was supposed to continue on beyond that point. Tolkien was notorious for not finishing things, after all.
Right.
I'd also observe that, kind of unusually, I think, certainly for the Quenya poetry and in any form of Quenya, this is rhymed, and it is iambic. So, and the verse, the rhyme scheme, rather, is a little bit complex. You've got, in the first stanza of four lines, it's A A B B, and then the second one is also A A B B. And then in the third verse of six lines, it's A A B C B C. So you see this sort of a hinge point in the verse where the rhyme scheme gets more complicated. And then it goes back to A A B B and ends with A A. So, all that said, here's what it sounds like. Excuse me, I'm a little rusty, but I'll try my, I'll do my best. That's the end.
Brilliant.
Wonderful.
Fantastic.
Now, Carl, you said that the rhyme scheme, or this kind of use of rhyme scheme was unusual in Quenya poetry?
Yeah, actually, I mean, if you look at Nomadie, for instance, which is, other than this, the longest Quenya poem we have, Stand, it's not rhymed at all.
Right.
I think later, later in life, Tolkien sort of moved away from rhyming poetry. Well, I can't say that entirely because Elbret is rhymed.
Right.
Yeah.
Hmm.
That's interesting, yeah. It, I'm, what I was most struck by listening to it was the kind of, the kind of rhythm. There are certain, you know, certain syllables that really stand out that is, because so much of it is, you know, sort of flows on, it's, you know, it gives a very sort of enjammed sense. But then there are a few of those times when those, you know, lines that have, you know, that have hard stops there in the middle. And if you could put the text that you had back up there again for a second?
Yeah.
The, yeah, yeah, like, I was particularly struck by the, the mate cinque Eldemar. When you said that, there were more pauses, like, there was, there was almost a cejura in the middle of that line. The rhythm was just, you know, was, was, was very pronuncedly different, it seemed, than, than the lines around it in that way. And it's, it's, it's interesting. It sort of seems like there are these, there are these particular words with the, with the ate sound there, and then, and then the cue, you know, the inqui after that. It just, that line is just one that, again, hearing it really jumped out at me.
Yeah. Well, the reason I pronounce it that way, there is actually a little typo in Andrew's text there. There should be two Ts in the mate.
Mate, yeah.
Both Ts are pronounced.
Right.
So that's, that's why it comes out with that, what you hear.
Right, right, yeah, which, which makes that even more pronounced therefore, yes, yes.
Yeah, there are no silent sounds in Quenya.
Right, right.
And Carl, that idea of, you know, it being, that this version of Quenya being a kind of more, kind of parallel with the Book of Lost Tales, a raw kind of primitive sounding, well, primitive's not the word, but a kind of, it doesn't change, exuberant is a good word, yes. I mean, when you compare that to the later Quenya, I mean, can you, can you trace that idea of sounds changing and becoming more refined?
That's a good question. I bet you could. My instinct is that if you could, and you sat down and you looked at the sound inventory, you would see some sort of distinct shift. But it's not a study that I've made myself. It does, I mean, Quenya at this stage, certainly in this poem, sounds more sing-songy to me than Quenya at a later stage.
And that might have something to do with Quenya becoming more of the elf-latine and used in ritual. It's just how, you know, how Quenya gets repositioned later on, too, as being more a language of, you know, the elf-latine and all that and everything. It's an interesting thing to look at, yeah.
Sure.
Were there, were there variations in the, the metrical form of the lines as well as the rhyme scheme? That is, you know, the iambic pattern that we see here, did that fade also later on? Or does it remain iambic? Do the, do the line lengths vary greatly?
Is that for me or for Andrew?
Yeah, for you, Carl.
Okay. We don't have a whole lot of Quenya, Quenya poetry.
Right, right, right.
By which to make a judgment. But certainly with, with Nomadie, it is somewhat iambic, but there's quite a bit of variation in the number of yams in a line. Verse, or rhyme doesn't seem to play any part in it. I almost think that it's more quantitative verse in the classical Latin sense.
Well, that's what I was wondering. That's what I was starting to wonder about that, yeah.
I think it's become that by that time.
Right.
But I'm not an expert on poetry, so I, no, don't quote me on that.
Oh, that's okay.
Or if you quote me on it, note that I qualified it.
Right, right, no problem. Well, actually.
I want to get this one.
Okay, right?
Early Elvish poetry. This is, this has some good 1920s poetry in it, with Elvish poetry.
Great, great. Yeah. Well, the 1920s were such a fertile poetic period for Tolkien, that is not surprising. Actually, Demetra has just asked a question or sort of posed a theory. She was wondering about, specifically about the shift from, from, from rhyming poetry to non-rhyming poetry. And she was asking, is this part of moving with the times? You know, the lack of rhyme in later poetry? You know, that, you know, when Tolkien started as a late Victorian or Edwardian poet, you did rhyming, right? But by the time of the Lord of the Rings, rhyming poetry was almost dead. You know, would we see it sort of progressing in that, in that way?
Is that for me again?
Sure, sure.
Okay. I think there might be something to that. I doubt that Tolkien would bow to sort of cultural peer pressure like that. But certainly, I mean, we know he was fascinated by alliterative poetry, which does not accept incidentally rhyme.
Right.
I'm sure that that, his, his growing interest in and work with alliterative poetry probably influenced, if there was a trend away from rhyme, probably influenced that somewhat.
Right.
And Carl, don't we know, when he was in, around this time, he took some books out of the Exeter College Library, like Heat's Shelley Romantic Poets. Right around this time, he takes out a series of books. And I just wonder if that had any, if he was reading up on that or something for this type of poetry?
That's a good question. I mean, I know his, his English poetry at this time certainly, I believe, all rhymes.
Right, that's what I was just thinking, too. I mean, we certainly see, even later on, you know, in the poems that he composed for The Adventures of Tom Bombadil, there's plenty of rhyme there. In fact, we still see him being really playful with his rhyming as well. I'm thinking in particular of the, of the, the really short-line comical cat poem that he wrote, that he included in The Adventures of Tom Bombadil, which I, which I believe to be a late poem. So we can still see him clearly not only using rhyme, but manifestly delighted by rhyme in that, and delighting with rhyme, obviously, in that poem.
What I greatly regret is that we don't seem to have any Elvish alliterative poetry. We know that it existed because he makes it pretty plain that the Narni Kinkurin was in alliterative poetry, but we don't have any Elvish examples of it.
Right, right, right. Yeah, yeah. And actually, on a similar subject, Noam Weiss was asking, I guess for either one of you, are there, are there any Gnomish poems?
It depends, go ahead.
No, you, no, you go ahead, Carl.
It depends where you draw the line between Gnomish and Noldorin, I guess. Arguably, one of the poems in The Secret Vice is in Gnomish, or certainly what Tolkien would have called Noldorin at that time. Early Noldorin, excuse me, early Gnomish, the Godolgrin period, I'm not aware of any, any verse from that.
No, I'm not either. No, I think it was just that between Noldorin and everything. But I don't think there's anything. And the, the Feonor one is mainly Quenya, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Sequente Feonor.
Sequente Feonor, which is in Parma Elderland Bar on 15, I think. And that had, yeah, that's mainly, that's mainly Quenya.
Yeah. Another vexation I'll note is although we have this massive, relatively massive vocabulary from this time, and some pretty extensive grammatical notes, we still don't really know for sure how to translate either Narquellion or Sequente Feonor. I mean, Chris Gilson has made a valiant effort on those, but still a lot of it is just conjecture.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, if Tolkien doesn't provide a translation, there's a very good chance that whatever we come up with will just be conjecture at some level.
Right, right.
Yeah. No, I went through and I tried to do a correspondence between the words in Sequente Feonor and actually in the lexicons. And you could see where there's lots of gaps, basically. Yeah, yeah. Keep digging.
Wonderful. Well, thanks, everybody, for, for joining us today. I know we've, we've kept on going, it's starting to get late over there in London, Andy, so, you know, I thank you for joining us. And Carl, thank you so much for, for jumping in. As I say, what a, what a delightful surprise that was. Thanks, thanks very much for your generosity.
Thanks for the opportunity. It was brilliant. I work upon your shoulders, so it was brilliant for you to join us.
Yes, Carl was teasing Andy before we started. I, right, right before we began, I saw your name on the list, and I was like, hey, look, Andy, Karl Haas Teter is here today. And he was like, what? It was like, like the day, the day that I was giving my first Tolkien presentation at Kalamazoo several years back. And, and right before I started speaking, Tom Shippe came into the room, and I was like, oh, great.
Yeah, that's how I felt with Carl, yeah, exactly.
I have much the same Tom Shippe story. It was at Oxford in 92.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, wonderful. And thank, and Demetra, glad you could be here, too. Thank you for your, for your comments as well.
And I'm getting right back to work on my thesis, Demetra, I promise.
Yeah, okay. Oh, by the way, meanwhile, and this should not surprise me at all, while we've been talking about other things, Mythguard student Alyssa House-Thomas has been busily digging away and trying to solve the Feonor question.
Oh, brilliant.
She said she.
Because I know she has the lexicons. I know she has the lexicons.
Yeah, she, she found, she found a reference on, I think it's the Parma Elderland Bar on page 11? No, volume 11, page 35.
35.
Feonour, F I O N A U R, derivation of Fion, F I O N, bowl or goblet?
Let's see. Hmm, yep, yep, I see it. Fion, yes, bowl or goblet.
Bowl or goblet.
Or deleted. Or deleted in ink, and then he makes reference to fionway, yeah.
To fionway, right, and it's, and it's in the entry for fionway that the reference appears in, in, in the Book of Lost Tales appendix.
That's right, yeah, so bowl or goblet, and then he deleted the or in ink, so just bowl goblet, basically, yeah. Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, yeah, anyway, so, so at least we can leave without that, that unsolved mystery on our, on our consciences, we can all sleep better tonight knowing that, no, that's excellent. Thanks for that, as always, anyway, as I said, thanks for joining us, thanks for, Demetra for her comments, Carl for spontaneously joining us, and Andrew, thanks again for your presentation, I am...
My pleasure.
It is one of my own greatest, greatest weaknesses and sort of, you know, personal regrets, that I have studied his languages as little as I have, it is just not something that I've ever really been able to dedicate the time to, but it's certainly one of my own greatest, greatest sort of desires and aspirations, you know, in continuing the rest of my life as a Tolkien reader, to be able to get into the languages more. So I really appreciate you guys coming to, to help us out with some, some background, helping people to understand the languages that are here, that are, that are underlying the Lost Tales that we've just been discussing, and, yeah, as Andrew was pointing out before, of course, we choose the content of the Mythgard Academy classes based on a democratic process, you know, the, those who have supported the academy get to vote in the books that we do, so if people want to do Book of Lost Tales, Part Two, we, we can do that, we just have to, have to lobby among the electorate for that, so we'll see, but very good.
Great tales, they're the great tales.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, the big ones, so, anyhow, so we will, we'll be moving on, as I said, again, due to the will of the electorate, our next class will be on Frank Herbert's Dune, which we will be starting in two weeks, two weeks from tomorrow, at our normal, non-Europe friendly time, Andrew, my apologies, at 9:30 PM Eastern Time, so I hope you guys will be able to join us for that, and thank you very much, everybody, have a good night now.